Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, Wednesday, November 16th, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to read our mission statement. We are committed to the academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Next up, we have recognition for fire and safety poster winners, and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Kravitz.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First of all, it is so nice to see so many kids and families in our audience. Thank you for being here. Congratulations. It is my pleasure to announce the winners of the 2022 Michael J. Fitzhula Junior Fire Safety Poster Contest. Each year, the school district invites local firefighters to come into the district and do a fire safety presentation. At the same time, our local firefighters take time to judge the artwork of some of our students and then select winners for this contest. Michael J. Fitzhula is somebody who was here when I started in the district a lot of years ago. He served the school district as the Director of Health, Safety, and Security for 20 years. He lost his fight with cancer in 2009, but his impact on the district was vast and indelible, and we remember him with this award. So, this year's theme was "Fire Won't Wait: Plan Your Escape." For those of you who worked with your kids at home to create these posters, I'm sure you either figured out a spot, right? Where do they go? Is it the tree? Is it the neighbor? Or is it the back fence? So, thank you for taking time doing all of that. From a logistical standpoint, we're going to be calling Mrs. Kaitlin Caldwell from Sapphire first, and she's going to present the Sapphire students. For those students who are coming up, when you're called, you're going to be invited to stand in the square, right here, where we'll take a picture. And then, when your whole school is done with your principal, you get to go take a picture in front of this beautiful backdrop right here. Don't worry, we will not be in any of the pictures. We want them to be nice pictures. And then, while Sapphire's taking their picture, Smith Clove and Ms. Cook will come up with Ms. Markovich, and they'll present the Smith Clove folks. So, that's how we're going to do it. I'd ask if there are any questions, but we're not really taking questions. So, with that, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. So, we have Ms. Kaitlin Caldwell from Sapphire Elementary.
It is my pleasure to announce the fire safety poster contest winners from Sapphire Elementary School.
First, we have Alyssa Candela. Congratulations, Alyssa.
Stand right over there, okay? Got it. Good job.
Alyssa, this is really important because you're the first one in the square, so everyone's going to follow you.
I would also like to welcome and congratulate Xavier Germosen. We also congratulate Jacob Habib. I don't think Jacob was able to be with us this evening. Congratulations also to Chloe Mantok. Congratulations to Adem Ankaya. Unfortunately, Adem is unable to join us. And also, congratulations to Andrew Valdez. Those are the six winners from Sapphire Elementary School. Congratulations to all of them. We are so very proud of you.
Great job. You did a great job.
Good job, guys.
Okay. And next up, we have Ms. Cook and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope.
I'm here.
All right. All right. And next up, we have Ms. Cook and Ms. Markovich from Smith Clove Elementary.
All right. Thank you. We are very proud of our Smith Clovers. We have kindergarten, first grade, and special education representatives tonight. Our first award recipient is Chelsea Our next award winner is Farah Fernando. And then, Kayden Freely. I don't think I saw Joshua Maynard here tonight, but also Dominic Morel is here with a nice hair cut. Thank you, everyone. We're very proud of you.
Come on over here. Make sure we hear if you want my backdrop. All right. Everybody keep a smile, and then I'm going to move you over. You just look so cute right now. I have to do it. Make sure my bro's smiling, too.
Okay. Congratulations. Now, we have Central Valley. We have Dr. Alt and Mr. Barone.
Good evening. We are very excited to share our Central Valley winners for our Fire Safety Poster Contest, and we were so excited that we actually gave our children their certificates in their classrooms, because we were just so excited to celebrate them. Congratulations Congratulations to Madeline Hoffman.
Okay. And next up, we have North Maine. We have Mr. Coto and Mr. Davis. You can clap for them, too.
Mostly for Mr. Davis.
That was a little on the lame side, but we're going to let it slide. Good evening, everybody. So, we have our three winners here, because one of our third grades did not compete, so we only have three tonight. So, I am looking in the audience, trying to see everybody. Not sure, because people came in, but I have... Our first winner is Angie Miranda Duarte. Is Angie here?
There she is.
And then, we have Christopher Cuevas Garcia. Christopher's here, too. And our last one is Janaya Arne, but I believe Janaya is not here. Janaya is not feeling well. We did talk to her father today, so she's homesick. So, these are our north.
Mrs. Bendley, are the students' pictures going to be on the website? I was asked.
Oh, yes.
They will be on our website.
And before, we have Pine Tree Elementary. Just so everyone knows, all the parents who are here afterwards, after Pine Tree is called, at some point, our Board of Ed President, Mr. Siriella, will let everybody who was taking pictures and who was here for the Fire Safety Poster Contest, he's going to let you all leave, unless you really want to stay, and you're more than welcome. It's going to be a gripping meeting. Yes, and you will also get your posters back. Not tonight, though. No, we'll get them to you. So, with that, are you ready, Mr. Jades? All right, come on up. Mr. Jades and Mr. Martin.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Our second grade winner for Fire Prevention Week poster, Katie Cueva. Our third grade, Savannah Torres. Fourth grade, Jonathan Habib. And our fifth grade winner is Ashley McHugh.
A big congratulations to all of our students. Thank you again to all of our families, our administrators, and our local firefighters who helped make all this possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to congratulate all the winners, and at this time, we'll call for a five-minute recess to allow the families to leave if they wish or stay if they wish.
Thank you. Aren't they cute?
Yeah.
I love the ones that run up here with the...
So, this little girl...
That was awesome. Great way to start.
Absolutely.
My kids are very... It's all about Christmas. I keep forgetting that.
Oh, they've already jumped ahead.
Yeah.
Well, you need to insert gifts.
Okay. Thank you. I want to recognize again the winners of the Fire Safety Posters. It was a great night. Thank you for the families coming out. No board business was discussed during the break. And next, we'd like to move to the presentation of the External Audit Report for 2021-2022. Patrick?
Yes, thank you. So, I'd like to introduce our partner, Brent Napoleon, who handles our annual audit, external audit. So, Brent is going to come up and walk us through the 21-22 External Audit Report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I hope everyone has a copy of our financial statement in front of them. It's this bound report. Looks like that. So, I wanted to kind of start, you know, just because there are... To explain sort of why I'm here and what our audits are all about. The state law requires, you know, virtually every school district in the state of New York to have an audit by an independent CPA firm. And, you know, we're hired by the board. We report directly to you, as I'm doing right now. And, you know, we're a form of oversight that, you know, obviously, the school district is entrusted with a lot of public money, property tax fare dollars, as well as funding from state and federal governments. And we are hired by the school district to give our opinion on your financial statements and to also do some work that relates to compliance in relation to federal and state grants. So, our report, you know, is found on page one. It's an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion a school district can get. Basically means that, in our opinion, your financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. You know, the results, the operations, the balances and everything, you know, that they are materially correct. So, again, that's the best opinion we can give. The letter goes on to describe some of the management's responsibilities and our responsibilities. But, you know, to not... I'm not going to go through the whole letter, but just to give you some ideas, you know, on the second page, it talks about what our responsibilities are. So, they include things like identifying and assessing the risks of material misstatements in the financial statements. You know, we're required to obtain reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, because in order to do that, we'd have to, you know, we'd have to look at every single transaction a school does. That's not practical. So, but, you know, reasonable assurance is still a very high level of assurance that the financial statements are not materially misstated. We have to obtain an understanding of the school district's internal controls. We evaluate the appropriateness of the accounting policies. Again, all of this is to, you know, to safeguard the public money and the government money that, you know, the school district receives and spends each year. So, that's our opinion. I'd like to move to page 21 of the financial statements, which is sort of the results of the operations of the school district for the year. So, on page 21, this is the school district. These financial statements include two different ways of looking at the school district's balances. This is... This way is sort of the way that the school keeps its books. Fund... There are separate funds for different, you know, different activities. And, you know, this is like a budgetary basis, current financial resource-based way of looking at the numbers. I'll talk briefly about the other way of doing it, which is more like a business where you have like long-term liabilities and fixed assets, and a lot of estimates of long-term things that, you know, that are not as relevant to the budget. But typically, when the school is in, you know, when the board's in session, when the taxpayer sees a budget, this, you know, this report here, particularly the general fund, talks, you know, is in that way of looking at the district's finances. So, on page 21, the first column, General Fund, the... A few lines up from the bottom there, net change and fund balances, $5 million, you know, about $5,600,000 surplus this year. Again, to put that in a little context, the school's budget's about $190 million. So, there is a surplus there of about $5.6 million. And so, where did that surplus kind of come from? There are a couple lines up from that. You'll notice $5.5 million, which is money that was... That the district received under the CARISA Act, which is the second of the three acts that were passed by the federal government to provide funding for school districts for COVID. So, the school district used that money to prevent, you know, COVID from spreading, to prepare, you know, their classrooms to deal with COVID. You know, again, this was the... That particular amount is the second part of the act. The district also spent some money that was under the American Rescue Plan. They're going to continue to do that here in the upcoming year. But quite a bit of, you know, of federal money related to COVID has come to all governments in response to COVID, and the district is no different. But that money, of course, is kind of a one-time... Obviously, that act isn't going to happen again next year. So, if not for that $5.5 million, the district's, you know, results of operations in its general fund would have been about break even. The, you know, the other funds that are shown here, Special Aid Fund is used to account for like reimbursement-based grants. As you spend the money, you record the revenue. So, the bottom line of that one is typically zero, and zero again here this year. The School Lunch Fund shows a significant surplus, over... Just a little over $1 million there, you'll see, in surplus in the School Lunch Fund. So, the reason for that, the previous two years, the district actually lost money in its School Lunch Fund. Why did that happen? Well, if we think about those... What was going on in those two years, the, you know, the school district was closed. There weren't, you know, there was no in-person, you know, learning for periods of time. So, obviously, if kids aren't here, you can't serve lunches. And you do have, you know, several employees in the School Lunch Fund that, you know, that are still going to receive salaries and things. So, naturally, in those years when there wasn't, you know, when the students weren't all in person, the school district, you know, the School Lunch Fund was suffering some losses. Here in this year, totally different scenario. We're back to in-person, and the federal government passes a law that says that all the students, regardless of need, are going to receive a free lunch. So, you'll notice that the vast, vast majority, about $3.4 million of revenue there in the School Lunch Fund, is from federal sources. The reimbursement rates that are paid on those lunches that are served to all the students for free, those reimbursement rates generally exceed easily the expenditures that most schools have for school lunches. Our audits of the other districts, you know, near you and, you know, around you, many of them saw the same, if not all, saw the same sort of results of operations this year, that because of that program, they had a surplus. So, you know, that's the results there in the School Lunch Fund. Miscellaneous special revenue is the kids... Generally, the bulk of it is clubs, the student deposits and student activities. So, not a lot to talk about there. The Capital Project Fund here this year is pretty quiet. There were only two capital projects. One of them is just purchasing buses. That money was part of the general fund budget. And the only other project was actually one that was completed in a prior year. It's a Smart Schools Bond Act project, a lot of technology-type purchases there. And the revenue from that, you know, for that project was received this year, and that $4.1 million of revenue is what created a surplus there in the Capital Fund. And really, that surplus just sort of wiped out the deficit from the previous year, because we're just waiting for the revenue. So, you'll notice at the bottom of the Capital Projects column, there's a zero, because the projects are essentially closed at the end of the year. In the Debt Service Fund, the major takeaway is that the school district is required to look at the debt that is issued. And just like we all would do, and, you know, if you're a homeowner, a homeowner would typically look at their mortgage and say, hey, maybe it's time to refinance. Well, a refunding at a school district is like a refinance, you know, that an individual might do, where they're trying to save some money on interest. So, because you're dealing with public money, the school district's required to look at their bonds and assess that. And so, there was a refunding that happened here. About $12, $13 million of debt was refunded, and that's going to save taxpayers on interest going forward. So, that's the highlights there of, you know, what happened, sort of the results of operations this year. And if we back up just two pages to the balance sheet for the governmental funds, we see all the same columns for the different funds. And, you know, I'll draw your attention to the General Fund. You know, the fund balance there is about $42 million. A lot of that is about $28 million is in reserves. Reserves for a school district are management and the board's tools to try to keep the district in a healthy financial position and to try to weather the things that might force the school district to make the tax levy, you know, that if you didn't have them, the tax levy could jump around a lot, because you wouldn't have any savings to address the things that could really skew the budget. So, things like retirement system contributions, you know, the rates that you're required to contribute can vary a lot. If you, you know, you save during the years when the rates are low, and then when the rates jump up, you can keep the tax levy nice and even. And as a taxpayer, you know, you don't want to see a huge swing in your tax bill. So, again, that's, you know, that fund balance is essential to making sure that the, you know, the district is in a good financial position. And also, I'd like to note that that fund balance, you know, has grown consistently over the last five years in a way that puts the district in a very good financial position. And when I say it's grown, relative to the other schools near you, it's not a very high number, sort of relative to budget. You know, obviously, you're a bigger school, so you're going to have a bigger number. But relative to your budget, your fund balance is not huge in any way. You know, and that's not really opinion. That's just facts based on comparison to other local districts. So, your fund balance is healthy. You know, in this year, it's about 22% of your budget. But, you know, not healthy would be 10% or below. So, you're at 22%. That's healthy, and that's what you need. You want to... You really want to continue to keep growing that. But at the same time, don't think that, you know, that you hear, oh, that's about double of what he just said was healthy. Again, school districts around you, some of them have even more money set aside. So, you do want to try to continue to grow that. And, you know, you can only do that by, you know, continuing to keep your expenditures in line. in line and, and, and manage the, the finances properly. You've done, again, done a great job of that over the last few years. I guess from there, we could, we could move on to, like, the budget to actual schedules that are page 71, just to give you some idea of how, you know, how your results compared to the budget. On page 71, it shows that the district's budgets for revenue were about, you know, final budget, about $187 million, and actual revenue was about $195. Again, that one-time grant from the federal government is the line, share of that about $5.5 million. Flipping to page 72, here, here we, we show the expenditures, and it's the final budget, again, $190.8 million. The expenditures and encumbrances, encumbrances are orders, where you've, you've ordered things but haven't received them yet. Between the expenditures and encumbrances, there was about $1,500. I mean, on $190 million, $1,500 is very tight. So you say, well, why did that happen? The, the reason was that, you know, transportation costs really, you know, there was a significant increase, more than budgeted, kind of unexpected increases in transportation costs, where things needed to be contracted out and so forth. So, you know, the district transferred monies from other areas and were able to stay, you know, despite that challenge, able to stay within the, the, you know, the amount that the voters authorized the, the district to spend. So again, a good job there. So, you know, a little bit further on, about page 78, we have our reports on compliance and internal control. That's another opinion that we have to give related to the, the federal grant monies that the district receives. Again, unmodified opinions on those reports and no findings, you know, comments whatsoever. So again, another, another credit to, you know, to, you know, job well done here by the, the district's management. You'll, you'll notice that there's a management letter together, you know, included with the financial statement. That's where we might, you know, bring forth anything, any concerns that we might have, you know, that aren't really covered in the report. The only, the only items in that letter are the school district's, school lunch fund, fund balance, which I think in, in the past year, we may have even said, hey, you know, your school lunch fund balance is starting to look a little low. You guys are losing money. All of a sudden this year, thanks to the federal government, the, the school lunch fund balance is actually a little more than the state would like to see. And the state, so the state, the state says you really should keep that to within three months expenditures. So again, really, as a result of the federal government, government's program, the school district's fund balance is a little higher than that. And that's really is good news because now that money, the district's, you know, required to submit a plan to the state. And the district, you know, my understanding is the district plans to use that money to fund some, some capital, you know, equipment and such that the, that the school lunch fund, you know, has, has needed for a while. They're able to have some money to, to upgrade those things. So that's good news for the, the local, you know, school, school lunch program as well. So if there's, if anyone has any questions or anything they'd like, like me to discuss further, I'm more than happy to, to give some more information.
Thank you, Mr. Napoli.
All right, thank you. Again, I want to just mention that, you know, the, the business office here treats us great when we come, you know, really appreciate, you know, all the hard work that they put in. This is my, my third year as the CPA in charge of your audit. And again, great experience here, the management, you know, they're, they're top-notch. So again, appreciate you guys having us to do the audit and hope to see you again next year. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have the capital project presentation. Mr. Cahill.
No, but it's here.
Is it on the television?
I mean, we could turn around. We have to.
Okay. The show must go on. Okay. Thank you. I'd like just to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to present this capital program to you this evening. My name is Patrick Cahill. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Management Services. And with me tonight is Andre Rudiak, the Director of Facilities here at Monroe Woodbury, and David Samel, our architect with CPL Architects and Engineers. And we're talking here about our 2022 proposed capital program and referendum. Our referendum date is December 6th. And we, I'm calling this a capital program because it literally will involve multiple dozens, probably a dozen or more, individual capital projects that'll have to be individually submitted to the New York State Ed Department and get approval through the Ed Department, and will have to file paperwork with the Ed Department, et cetera. So it's, it's a fairly involved program. It will take us, I would say, probably five to six years to, to do everything because we're restricted in some ways by having school 10 months of the year. There are certain projects that we can only do in the summer, so it makes it more difficult we have to operate and plan around the school year. So I'm not going to read all of this. It's the introduction to our, our capital program. But what we're really talking about is on Tuesday, December 6th, we'll be holding a special district meeting, which is sort of the legal term for a referendum or a vote of the qualified voters of the district. And what we're doing is we're seeking permission or authorization to conduct or initiate a multi-year capital program. And in New York State, it's a, basically a requirement that we have voter approval to undertake this type of capital program. So the program and the projects that comprise it will address longstanding problem of deferred capital maintenance in nearly every building in the district. And we're not just talking about our seven school buildings, we're talking about 12 buildings, the seven schools plus other buildings throughout the district. Voter approval is required, I mentioned that already. The vote will take place here at the Education Center. We typically have our budget votes at Central Valley Elementary, so we're going to actually hold that here, and it'll be from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM on December 6th again. So the project, if approved, would be a $115 million project to upgrade outdated building and infrastructure systems. And this would include, and we're going to get into more details on this, the heating systems, the electrical systems, fire alarms, and CO detectors in our schools. Replacement or repair to school roofs, security vestibules in the buildings, the school buildings, which don't already have one. Development outdoor learning spaces. We intend to refurbish a limited number of classrooms, construct a, a building which would house bathrooms, permanent bathrooms, and equipment storage on our athletic field and complex. Repair, or actually replace the, the tennis courts. Many of these systems, most of these systems are well past their, their useful life. And in terms of, like, the building systems require ongoing repair to keep them functional. And I have up there, it's, it, when we, constantly repairing these things is sort of like throwing good money after bad because they are past their useful life. And repair expenses are not eligible for any sort of state aid. Capital projects, like what we're proposing are, and our state aid reimbursement rate is somewhere around 75% for eligible projects. So for, for every dollar we spend, we're getting 75 cents back from New York State, typically over a 15-year period. So it, really what we're doing is failing to take advantage of that. It's called building aid, that program. You know, the other thing that we talk about, we've talked about in the past, is we risk sort of a catastrophic failure. So every winter, Andre and I have a discussion, the boiler at, you fill in the building, is not functioning right. And, you know, when we have a problem with the boiler, it's not $1,000 or $1,500 to repair it, it's tens of thousands of dollars to fix it. The, the other, the other piece I wanted to say is just sort of the majority of these projects in the program, I would, I would characterize them as need-to-have projects. They're not nice to have, they're not frivolous, they're, they're the basic systems of all our buildings, which we've put off doing for years. And I'm going to get into why we've, we've put them off. We've planned this project for a long time. The original list, and I mentioned this at another point, when, when we looked at everything that we need, the original list was $168 million. And we just looked at that and said, we can't really move forward with a project of that magnitude. And we had to make some difficult cuts and decisions to, to bring it down to 115. So let's see. So what are we talking about? Let's get into some specifics here with the proposed program. So how did we come up with this? The scope development, that's what we call this, is based on a building condition survey, multiple building condition surveys that we've conducted. And school districts in New York State are required to do a building condition survey every five years. And it's essentially, we, we hire a firm like CPL, we, we go around the district, we look at our facilities and say, oh, this needs to be fixed, we should replace that. And, and we basically come up with a list, and we submit that to New York State. New York State uses that as well for their planning purposes for building aid. But we, we also had meetings with building principals and administrators, directors and staff. And we, we turned to our Buildings and Grounds Department and, you know, because they have knowledge of and experience with our buildings and said, you know, they know about what are, whether the systems that are failing, what are the areas that are problematic. And like I said, we, we came up with a $168 million list. We, we also engaged the Palumbo Group, Lou Rodriguez and Scott Butler are here in the audience. They're with the Palumbo Group and CPL to help us with cost estimation and to seek their guidance in putting this plan together. So as I said, we had to trim that list down, that $168 million list, down to a more manageable level. And we did that by using some guiding principles that we had established. And we, we, in consultation with our Facilities Committee and our, our Capital Project Task Force Advisory Committee, we identified guiding principles. The number one principle was health and safety. Number two was avoiding imminent failure, building or system failure. Number three was enhancement of, you know, educational environment and so forth. And so we used those to prioritize our projects and cut that big list of $168 million down to 115, if you will. So this grid here chose the schools on the left, each one of our buildings, and a very brief description of the proposed project associated with the building, or projects, I should say. On the right-hand side is the other buildings. So this, as I mentioned, it touches on 12 different facilities in our district. So I, I'm actually going to allow Dave Samel to kind of go over some of these proposed projects with you.
Sure. Thank you, Patrick. So you can see that this list is relatively exhaustive, right? I mean, it's, it's, it addresses the highest priorities at each of the school buildings and the other buildings, as well as the district's priorities. So the takeaway here really isn't to go through every item or to talk about exactly what the scope is. So you can see generally, like Patrick said, follows the guiding principles, the most critical items, the types of projects that we want to do on our terms and not on, on nature's terms, like roof replacement or boiler replacement. If you want to turn to the next page. And then the next few slides are just going to be images that give you examples of the types of projects that we're talking about. Some of the highlights are these, are the boiler replacements. So you can see on the slide, it gives you the, the date that the boilers were installed. So typically boilers of this vintage would have a useful life of 30 to 40 years. And Andre's been working hard to either re-tube them or change the controls or burners. But at some point in time, it's just diminishing returns. You're just putting money into something that you're not going to get the value back. So for, for most of these boilers, we're doing water-to-water boiler replacement. What we're going to get is a much more efficient boiler and much better controls. For the ones that you see that are listed as steam to hot water, those buildings are going to get pretty much an entire new heating system. So, meaning that a steam boiler has steam univentilators in the building and steam piping. So that entire system will be replaced at several schools. Why go to hot water from steam? Steam is pretty antiquated technology, difficult to maintain, difficult to find mechanics who are expert in that. You probably had, have an advantage because you have several steam systems here, so you probably have a couple of good mechanics. But as they age out, you'll have trouble finding them. Also, water is much more efficient and much, much easier to control. So if you've been in a steam building where a control fails or a trap fails, which is a part of the, the piping system, you'll have overheating in one room, underheating in another room. You'll see, you go past a school in that condition, and it'll be the middle of winter, and all the windows on the second floor will be open. So you're just wasting money. So much more efficient system than the, than the steam system.
These, these systems are 50, 60 years old. So under the new, right now, any repairs we do, the local taxpayers flip the whole bill.
Correct.
Under this plan, the state's going to pay 75% of the bill to replace them. So I think that's, that's pretty encouraging.
Absolutely. And, and the energy savings that comes along with it.
Right.
And then this is just, how do you prevent deterioration? How do you protect the value of your assets, which is, which are your buildings? So these are just a few examples. Nothing catastrophic, nothing that's in imminent danger of, of collapse. But you'll see, it's just over time deterioration. So if you look at the masonry on the top-left picture and the one in the middle of the Education Center here, it's just over time, weather, weather takes its toll on masonry and the joints. Whenever, whenever water gets into joints, it just builds and builds as, through the freeze-thaw cycles in the wintertime. It's just something that if you don't address it, it becomes a problem. We're trying to be proactive and get ahead of it before it becomes a problem. Bottom-left pictures, which is Central Valley, I mean, the, these panels, and this is just my speculation, and I've been through situations like this. So in the 70s, when we went through the energy crisis, I would bet that behind those, those cream-colored panels, they went right over the windows that were there. So they, they weren't really well-built, if that's what they are, and I think they are. We're going to, we're going to put it back to the way it was. Because you can see it's deteriorating, you can look at the window sill, you see the white, that's efflorescence, efflorescence underneath the window. That means water's getting in that wall and deteriorating that wall. Roofs, many of your roofs are just, they're at the end of their useful life too, outside of the warranty period. So now if there is a leak, you need a repair, it's something that's going to happen out of your repair budget or your, your capital budget, I mean, your annual budget and not a capital budget. And the bottom picture is just a situation that happens at the loading dock, again, just over time, some water filtration. If we don't address it, it's just going to deteriorate further. And this slide is just some other catch-all. So you see at the top, there's a fuel tank that we're going to be addressing at the bus garage. We did talk about enhancing the facilities, and that's what the top slide, top-right photos of the slide are. We're going to look to do some outdoor learning spaces to improve the quality of those spaces for the kids. And then you can see at the bottom, just some other miscellaneous things that if we don't address them. Broken glass block at CV, and a lot of the electrical systems that we're looking to upgrade are, again, are obsolete, past their useful life, very, very difficult to get parts to, to keep them going.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. So, so why are we doing this now? We've said this in the past, and I've said this in the past, we sort of have this unique opportunity right now. And the opportunity has to do with the existing debt that the district has. And in the next two to five years, we will be essentially retiring. That means paying that off. And so this timeframe enables us to, to basically reinvest in our buildings. Some of these projects, as I mentioned, have been deferred for years and have a minimal impact on the budget because we've, we have this existing debt already built into our budget. And as that is retired, we can bring in the, the new borrowing to deal with some of these problems and some of these building systems that are way past their useful life. and some of these building systems that are way past their useful life. We also are talking about improving the health and, health and safety of students, staff and visitors to our building. The security vestibules is probably the, the best example of that. We're replacing the fire alarm system, so that's in every school building. They're, again, a system that's aging and problematic. Avoiding imminent failure, I talked about that, original systems past useful life. I mean, here, we just listed some of the ages of the boilers. So Middle School boiler is 54 years old. Central Valley is, you know, the relatively youthful, 40 years old. Pine Tree, I did a presentation there for their faculty, and they had the oldest boiler in the district, 62 years old, original to the building. Smith Clover is 54 years old, North Main is 51 years old. So those are, you know, some of the systems that we need to address. We talked about the improved reliability, lower maintenance costs, reduced energy consumption, improving the educational environment, you know, that's super important. And we're, we've put some money in to do classroom refurbishments and the new outdoor learning spaces. I, I'm just going to go back for a second. So, so I thought this picture was interesting. This is North Main, and I, I spoke to the principal, Joe Cota, recently. So this is one of the outdoor learning spaces. It's a, it's kind of hard to see, but it's a chalkboard affixed to the back of the building. And there's a curb here, a concrete curb. And, and so, you know, we talked about enhancing that space, right? Kids go out there, they spend time there, they learn there. When the weather is nice and good, I, you know, I, we could make this much more appealing, much more inviting, we'd get more use, and it would just be a much better educational space for kids. So that's what we're talking about. You know, and the bottom line is here, you know, really, this last bullet, preserve our schools for current and future generations of MW students and families. That's what we're, we're attempting to do here and what the project is all about.
So one of the, one of the things that gave me a lot of confidence on that last slide is that we have the team that was able to maintain something for 60 years. In, in this day and age where everything's throwaway, the fact that we have the skilled people to make something last 60 years gives me the confidence that when we put capital into this, they'll maintain it in a way that'll preserve it for a very long time as well.
That's so true, Don. We, we do have a lot of, you know, skilled people, maintenance mechanics, Andre and the team, you know, but we're at a point where it's time.
But the state pays for it.
That's right. It, it's time to, to, you know, replace some of these things. So fiscal plan in consideration, so the budget impact is, in my opinion, I would say it's readily absorbed, it's minimal, readily absorbed in the general fund. So I'd say, how is that possible? Well, we anticipate getting some additional state aid next year. You know, we've talked about foundation aid being phased in over three years. So next year, '23, '24 would be the third year. We talked about the energy savings, repair savings that we would enjoy when we initiate the project and have some new equipment in our buildings. The funding sources are multiple pieces to this. It's, it's, you know, sort of complicated because we're all trying to time things by, you know, retiring debt and bringing new debt on. But we've been saving, we just had our auditor here talking about our reserves. We've been planning this for years and we've been adding money to our capital reserve for, I would say, the last five years. So we have 13.4 million we've been saving for this. We're projecting as part of the fiscal plan to be able to grow that even more to 20 million. So that, that, that is like our down payment, you know, if you're buying a home. So whatever we put down, we don't have to borrow, number one. Number two, the other interesting thing about the capital reserve and the down payment with a school district is we receive state aid on that. So even though we're not borrowing and generating interest, the state will give us state aid as though we were. So the more we can put down, the less of an impact, you know, the total project would have. We will be borrowing, we'll be doing some short-term borrowing with bond anticipation notes and ultimately serial bonds. That's how we borrow, we issue bonds. New York State building aid is incredibly important, we've touched on that. The, the, I, I say here that it's 90% aidable, that's fairly conservative. What that means is there, there are certain expenses, like expenses at an administrative building, which are not, not fully aidable because it's not an instructional space. But we've been conservative in our estimates, saying 90%. I think that will actually be a little higher. Our building aid ratio is 75% right now. That's conservative too, because it was lower the last couple of years and it's been increasing. So by the time we're finished, all said and done, the, the aid ratio could be like 80, 82, you know. I talked about the retirement of existing debt and replacement with new debt. So that limits the budgetary impact and the tax impact ultimately, tax levy impact. And then finally, the final piece is the debt service fund. So debt service fund is about $2 million in that, and it's sort of a, money's that, a legacy of prior capital projects. And legally, we've been, you're supposed to use that to, to reduce the expense for your debt service over time. We've done that. But we also held that and saved that for this project and for this program. And so part of our plan is to assign that $2 million. Assign just means apply it. It's like the accounting term in fund accounting. Apply that over a 10-year period as this is fully phased in to lessen the impact on the budget. So let's talk about the financial impact. So the fiscal is, you know, how, what are we spending? How are we doing things? Where are we getting our money? The financial has to do with what, you know, what is this going to cost us year in and year out? So in the first year, we're estimating $197,000 impact, and we're going to phase this in over time. I said five years, six years. So we're not going to borrow 115 million upfront. We're going to borrow as we need the money and as we roll this out. So year one, we're estimating and projecting to borrow 18 million. And so that's how come that impact is, is lower in year one.
What is year one? What year is that?
Well, we're, we're saying it would be, we borrow in '23, so '24 is when we'd actually feel the fiscal impact. On average, though, if we just sort of cut to the chase, when we're fully phased in, the average annual cost for the duration of a project is estimated at 657,800 for 20 years. So seems like a big number, but in the context of our budget, represents about one-third of 1%. So less than 1%, about half of a percentage point on our levy. And that's today, in today's dollars. So over time, that will be, you know, less important or less of a factor. I, I've said it numerous times, I have another bullet, partially offset by increased energy savings and lower maintenance costs. We, being conservative again, we haven't factored that into the 657,000. So that, we think that will be less, but we want to be sort of conservative and judicious in our estimates. The bottom line, and somebody had said to me, why isn't that the first bullet? We estimate that the fully phased-in project would cost the typical resident or homeowner about $38 annually. And that's a, a property with a market value of approximately 350,000. So it, and, you know, we looked at that, we looked at all types of residential property to come up with that value.
But Patrick, your, your estimate there, that's assuming, that, that's assuming you're comparing apples to apples. But if you continue with the current systems, your expenses would be much greater because of the failures of the boilers and things of that nature.
Correct. If we don't do anything, that's true.
Right. It could easily be that much and some more.
That's right. The expenses would grow. That's true, Don. Okay. So, you know, here we're just talking about the timeline and some, certain milestones. We're, we're basically at this public relations point. So, you know, we had a start date, I put 10/27, because that's when we really started to ramp up our PR campaign. We've been talking about this, though, and planning this for a while. And the public relations would be ongoing because we'll talk about this not only up to December 6th, but well after to keep the public and the community informed about what's going on. The capital vote date is December 6th, Tuesday, December 6th. I was leery, and Dave and I discussed this, leery to start filling in some of these other steps, only because it, it really depends. It depends on SCD approvals, you know, if, if, if New York State Ed Department, their facilities unit, reviews our plans and specifications and approves them. If they're slow, that can hold, you know, hold the whole thing up. So, so there's a lot of things that are outside of our control that go into this. But, but generally, what would happen? We'd get the, we'd have the public approval if we, if we get that. We would then immediately go into the design phase and the planning phase with CPL and the Palumbo Group to say, what do we want to do? What do we think we can do? If we want to do something, it might have to be something relatively simple and easy to do it for, say, summer of June, of, of June, I'm saying June, summer of 2023. But the process would be, we develop those, those plans and specifications, we submit those to the New York State Ed Department, the facilities unit of New York State Ed, presuming it's, you know, easy and fast and seamless, there are no issues, they would approve that. You then have to go through a bidding period, you, you evaluate your bids, you then award to a contractor, they mobilize and they start to do work. So there's a lot of steps involved in that and some uncertainty. But that's essentially the process, and that would have to occur, as I said, for all the different projects. Not all at once, everything isn't done at once, it's, it's done over multiple years. So that's all we had for this. Any, any questions or comments?
When is the first Crusader chat scheduled for? And will the community be able to submit questions?
Yes. So December 1st, I believe, is the Crusader chat. And we've, we do have, we've gotten some questions, so we put that out there. And we're basically kind of go through this type of presentation in person at the high school, and people can, can come to that. And then we're going to address questions that we receive in advance of that. And we, we're doing, we've done a, a community letter that went out to everybody. We were doing a color brochure, very similar to what we do for the budget. That will come out shortly, I think it's in, in production right now. We're going to mail that to the entire community. And then we're going to have a reminder postcard right before the, the vote. And we've, we've gone to faculty meetings, we've been to the Woodbury Senior Center, we're doing our Crusader chat.
We did a video.
We did a video. I've reached out to community leaders, you know, local municipal leaders to see if, you know, to kind of explain it to them and see if they're interested in us going to a town or village board meeting to, to talk about it. So we're, we're open, we, we're trying to get the word out here. We want people to be, we want to be transparent and people to be informed about the project.
And Taryn has visited, has gone with Carol to senior centers. Because we want to make sure that seniors who are not here or can't come and vote have an absentee ballot. So we've done that as well.
Have any of the towns or village boards accepted you on any of the meetings?
No. I, they said, send us some materials, you know, that, not a lot of people come out necessarily to their meetings. So, but I, we've spoken to them and, you know, shared the information, and they found that helpful.
I think December 1st is also parent-teacher night. So for the Crusader chat, I just recommend that we, you know, de-conflict that. So in case someone wants to attend both, that they can
Right.
have the ability to.
It's going to be recorded.
It's recorded. So it's, it'll be live-streamed. So if you are unable to attend, you can, you can go on YouTube and see it as well. And we've already begun to collect questions. And every time we do a presentation, someone gives us some more questions. We just, this week, also met with the PTA, did a presentation to the PTA. They had some very, very good questions as well. So every time we get the questions, you know, we compile it in that way. When we do the Crusader chat, we'll have questions that, ahead of time, to be able to answer them in detail.
I, I think we're a community of homeowners here, right? And so it's pretty simple, the way you've laid it out, that, you know, we, we all know that you have to get new roofs from time to time and keep up with maintenance. And because of our ability to get New York State to help fund those things now and replace them, as well as, again, being homeowners, we all know that the value of our home is dependent mostly upon a school district being a good school district. And if you have buildings that aren't up to snuff and boilers that are not working properly, that's going to reduce the value of the district and in turn, the value of your home. So I think that's another characteristic that we've got to stress to the public, that, you know, this is good for the kids, good for the school district and good for the homeowners.
Good point, yes. Thank you.
Well, if the boilers fail and we don't do anything, then we can't educate the kids, right? Because they can't go to the building.
That's true.
What is, what is the average cost of one of these 60-year-old boilers to replace it? Just ballpark.
It's hard to answer because, because of the other work that has to happen. We, we did have, I don't have my budget sheets with me, but I think it was ranging anywhere between about $250 and, I think CV's way over $1 million, so.
Yeah, the, the, these are itemized.
It's because it's not just the boiler.
No, I was just, yeah, I was looking for ballpark. The reason why I asked the question is because if one of these has a catastrophic failure, I'm looking at just one boiler is going to put our tax hit way up there for the local people.
Absolutely, right. Absolutely.
And then it would become an emergency.
Yeah, and then it's all on the local taxpayers versus the state paying 75%.
And the disruption of your educational resources.
Right.
Any other questions? I want to thank you and the committee for, there was a lot of work that went behind this, a lot of building surveys, information, and then obviously, the cutting of the budget or the ask from 168 to 115 took a lot of work and a lot of give and take. So we really appreciate the level of work that went into that. And just ask the taxpayers to get out and vote on December 6th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the approval of the revised agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Questions or comments from interested citizens? Update on questions or comments raised from interested citizens? I do have a statement that I prepared that I'd like to read based on our last full board meeting. I want to thank the PTA for coming out to our last meeting and sharing their concerns. This board takes their concerns seriously. Although I cannot speak to specifics, we have since met as a board and some challenges have been, changes have been made. We did not set out to offend anyone, and I do apologize if anyone was offended or hurt by anything that was done. We know that the policies we set have a great impact on the school community. The new policy committee will not be further pursuing the policy in question at this time. If it is brought up again in the future, we will take all of your concerns into consideration. The committee will be focusing on policies that we feel are most important and pressing moving forward. Thank you. Questions or comments from interested citizens? We have none for this evening. Approval of the minutes? May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Action items. Resolution to accept the external audit report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. May I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointment of a chairperson and backup chairperson of the bond proposition vote to be held on December 6th. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointment of poll workers and election inspectors for the December 6th bond proposition. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Policy manual, first reading of the policy manual. Are there any questions or comments? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Personnel. Ms. Hock?
I respectfully ask the board for approval for the items listed under personnel.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm getting there, just a number of pages. I have the detailed agenda.
Oh, the trees, oh, the trees.
Yes. Business and financial. Mr. Cahill?
So I also respectfully request the approval of the items under the business and financial section, and I think it's 13.1 through 13.7?
I have a question.
I have a question also.
13.8. Sure. My question is on one of the resolutions. So I see that there's the one designating the voting location, but on the first one for the actual meeting, section one references that it's at Central Valley, and then it later goes on to say that it's at the Education Center. Is that because we noticed it in the paper as Central Valley? Or is there a mistake in the first section?
We're putting this resolution back on because there were two errors. And one was actually a typo with a number in the resolution from the attorney. So I reviewed it and pointed that out. So he said, you know what? Approve it again, you know, belt and suspenders. And then the other was initially, and it was, it was in an ad that said Central Valley, and it's actually the Education Center. So the attorney's opinion was reapprove the corrected resolutions, just to be on the safe side. So, and we actually did additional advertisements, required to do four advertisements within 45 days, to make sure that everybody knows the correct location. We've addressed it.
So should Section 1 then reflect that it's actually at the Education Center and not Central Valley?
Is that what it says, CV?
It does.
Okay, that should be the Education Center, yeah.
Good catch.
That's good. Did you have a question?
My question is in regards to the lunch program. So do we have an update as we are now well into November with the status of those that have applied for free and reduced lunch as to what percentage we're at?
I don't have that information off the top of my head, Stacy.
Okay.
So I would have to go back. I mean, we could at the next meeting or even via email, address that. But I'm not sure, so you're saying that we're in, the kind of transition period has ended, and where do our numbers stand?
Yeah, exactly. I know there had been some discussion way back at the beginning of the school year with some families that may not have qualified for the free and reduced.
Right, right.
But were still perhaps struggling financially to be able to afford the lunch. And given the information that was presented tonight, I quickly glanced at the letter. So the proposal, the audit is recommending that you put together a action plan to send to the state. Am I reading that correctly? As to what will be done with the surplus of monies?
Yes, that's exactly right. So we're limited, and New York State recommends you don't have more than three months of expenditures as fund balance. So we're in excess of that, probably, I don't know exactly, but maybe close to double that. So we're not the only school district that this has happened to, because what happened last year is there was free lunch and breakfast for everybody. And the reimbursement rate tends to be a little higher than the actual cost of the meal. So that's just generating a lot of revenue and essentially profit for the school lunch fund. So what we were going to do is, we haven't delved into the details of it, we just are cited by the auditor, we would put together some sort of plan that dealt primarily with equipment and/or improvements to the kitchens. And as part of the $168 million capital program that I talked about, it was about 2.3 million that were requests for the school lunch fund and the kitchen. We cut that all out. That was part of the 168 to 115. So we were hopeful that we could actually use some of that money for those types of improvements that had to be cut back on. But I can get back to you on the numbers. I'm not sure actually where we stand with free and reduced right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? May I have a motion to accept?
Would the motion be included, the change?
Yes.
So, correct.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committees on special education and preschool education. Motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Report by student representative.
So it's been a very exciting month since the last board meeting. It started out with Spirit Week and homecoming at the high school, and everyone had a fun time. I saw so many students dress up for Spirit Week and get excited for the school year, and everything ran very smoothly. The student council spent a lot of time planning the pep rally, which ended up being a success. And we all got together the following week with administration to discuss how we can do even better next year. This month, I had the pleasure of speaking with the youngest students in our district. The Sapphire Kindergarteners were extremely enthusiastic about starting school for the first time, and especially loved playing on the playground. I was extremely impressed by the Smithcove first graders. It seemed they had done a lot of very exciting activities this past month, like going to a pumpkin patch and decorating pumpkins. They attended a book fair and told me about lunchtime theater, where parents act out books during lunch. The first graders were very excited about what they were learning in their classroom and were especially excited about the things they're going to learn in the future. They already started telling me multiplication facts they knew off the top of their head, some I didn't even know, and how they're excited to learn languages further down the road. They told me about how the Kids on the Block puppet show, some of the high schoolers put on for them, and you could really see how they were using the message of kindness and sharing in their lives. I also love going to see Pine Tree students every month, and they were very excited to tell me about the Halloween costumes they got to wear at school. And because of all their good behavior in their classrooms, they notified me they had reached their goal of obtaining an all-school recess. Every student I talked to seemed to be excelling in and outside the classroom. In the high school, I have started sending out forms and surveys to students to discuss the results with the high school administration sometime soon, so that I can better represent the views within the school. Something exciting that happened in the high school today was the Youth and Government Club hosting a town hall with Senator Skoufis. So we had a huge turnout of civically engaged students and students looking to complete government class requirements. So all the schools I visited had a great month, and I look forward to visiting the middle school students tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great report. Reports by Board of Education committees. I'll go over audit. We had the audit presentation for the 2022 audit. Just before here at 5:00 PM, we had no concerns. They did a really great job, and things continue to move forward in a robust fashion. So we had no concerns during the audit review.
I'll go for visitation, or?
Yeah.
You want to go ahead?
Policy? I'll do policy.
Do policy.
Okay, so the policy committee met on November 10th to discuss the policy that was brought up for the first reading tonight, which is policy number 7132, which deals with the admission of non-resident students. And after a great deal of discussion, we decided to make some changes to that policy to address students who have moved out of the district during the school year. And we decided that it would be fiscally responsible to allow students who, whose families leave the district in their senior year, if they finish the first semester, to remain in the district, providing they pay non-resident tuition.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is December 12th at 8:00 AM at the Ed Center.
Okay, Dan?
Visitation went to two locations this past cycle. First, we went to the middle school. Middle school, the pool has been updated. We had been having problems in the past, but now it's been completely re-tiled, repainted, new signage in the pool area. And they're looking to update the bleachers for better seating. They've installed additional cameras for security, and they're working towards completing the push locks for all classroom doors for increased safety. The library also has additional flexible seating, which is really good for education for both students working on their own or for small group instruction. They're looking forward to hopefully getting the capital improvement project passed through for HVAC improvements, as well as roof, fire alarms, and heat entry for some exterior doors. The second place that we head over to was Pine Tree. They did receive some new flooring for some areas that needed to be replaced, as well as upgrades to the stage area with LED lighting, spotlights, as well as in the cafeteria area, Pride and BIS signage. One issue that needs to be addressed is the roof. During heavy rains, does tend to leak, as do a lot of the roofs that are flat throughout the district. Again, hopefully with the passing of the capital budget in December, that could be taken care of more towards the beginning. We were waiting on proofs for the outdoor field signage. I don't know if that has come through yet, but I know that Patrick had said that we would probably be looking to do it for spring, since the winter, most people are not outside. And also with the consideration of the outdoor structure that might be going in, depending on the capital project, I would assume that needs to be added as well. So do the signs once, do them right. Other than that, our next meeting is going to be on December 13th, I believe, at Smithcove with Mr. Coto and Mr. Davis.
Any questions? Thank you.
Where did I say, Smithcove? My apologies.
North Maine?
North Maine.
Reports by the board in central office. Ms. Tawver?
I just want to say welcome to the new hires and congratulations to all the retirees.
I'm glad to see the capital budget finally coming forth. I think it'll save us quite a bit of money.
I would like to congratulate all our fire safety poster winners. They did an awesome job. They had the highlight of the evening. I'd also like to thank Patrick and his team for all the work they did on the capital project. And I'd also like to mention that I attended the Almost Maine production at the high school, and it was very entertaining. Really enjoyed the evening. And have a good evening.
A lot of great work going on in the school and outside of the school. Special shout out to Monroe Cares, I think led by Dan and Deana Sapp, and the community within the school district helping out to reach out for families in need to help for Christmas in the holiday season. So we very much appreciate that. And again, shout out to Patrick and all the hard work he just put into all of it. Appreciate your.
Team effort.
Hopefully we get a yes.
Thank you to Patrick and your team for organizing everything for the capital project. Hoping for a positive outcome for that. I encourage the community to visit the website. I'm guessing that all of your information will be posted up there at some point, plus I know the flyer is coming. I want to give a special thank you to Carol Spindly, who I do believe is here somewhere, and Prudence, and to their entire team, and to the high school, because the student profile looks amazing. So I know that that has been on my list for quite a while now, so I appreciate that. It was well worth the wait. So thank you so much to Ms. Soto and the high school guidance team. Please, you know, extend my thank you to them. It does look amazing. I love the links that we can click on, which I will assume makes it easier to change as time goes by. So I think that's great, and I hope it is helpful to our graduating seniors to get into the schools of their choice. I want to give a congratulations to our girls varsity soccer team, who made it as far as they could go this past weekend. It didn't have the outcome that I think we all wanted, but it was nonetheless a wonderful season, and they should be very proud of themselves. I also want to say thank you to Mr. Vero for inviting us to the athletic signing. It is definitely a highlight, and I think the piece that I always am appreciative of is that it's not just that they're athletes, but they are academic stars. And that shows that we put the student before the athlete. But congratulations to all those athletes that signed, and have a good night.
Happy Thanksgiving. Have a good night.
Congratulations to all the safety award winners. Patrick, thank you for the great presentation. Thanks for you and your team's hard work to get another successful audit. And everyone's got to remember to get out to vote on December 6th. And happy Thanksgiving and have a good evening.
Special thank you, Patrick, and your team. It's incredible to see, and there's a lot of work that goes into it. Also special thank you to Ms. Caitlin Caldwell for, I've been able to get to her school twice this month, over the last month, for the hoedown, as well as the family night. Both times were great, great, great times to be around. So thank you very much.
Marga?
Congratulations to the students for their really good posters. I also attended Almost Maine. Big shout out to High School Drama Club. Was a really, really good evening. It was Friday evening, but well worth attending.
Thank you.
I'd like to recognize two of our employees who were listed in the retirement section, Mr. Eric Lenza and Mrs. Carol Pelisi, two people who have had decades of service to our district. Wonderful people, they will be missed, but we wish them a joyous retirement.
Thank you.
I just want to say thanks to Patrick also, mainly because he pushed our presentation to next month. We were supposed to be presenting on this. That's our result. So thank you so much, Patrick. Great job tonight, buddy. At last month's presentation, I presented on the region's results. I was asked to get the comparison of our results against regional and state results. I'm still waiting to hear back from the Mid-Hudson Regional Information Center on that. It's not out yet. So as soon as I get that information, I will be sure to pass it on to the board. In addition to what everybody else has said, congrats to Leanne Gaffney, who was selected to kick off the Red Ribbon Week event this year. And congrats to our newest FBLA and Music Honor Society inductees that were just inducted a few weeks ago. Congrats to them.
Thank you.
So I'm going to, you know, huge congrats to all of our sports teams, our cross-country teams as well, who competed. Good luck to our swimmers, who are going to be at states this weekend. Concert season is coming up, so I think they start, I think they start Monday, right? Monday night. So if you are looking for some incredibly good but inexpensive entertainment, please, you know, check out some of our concerts. The Kids on the Block performances have begun in our elementary schools. They've been around. We have two groups. We have a group of parent volunteers and a group of high school students who go and work in our buildings. So a big shout out to them. We, since we last met as a group, we've had two professional development opportunities across the district. We've had a half-day on Halloween on the 31st, which at the elementary level was primarily used for reviewing our new math program and creating common assessments across the grade levels. So you had entire grade levels, you gave that, we gave them the opportunity to come together as an entire first grade or third grade or fourth grade. And then on November 8th, it was, it was really nice because we had a chance, this is the first time we've had a professional development day that was.
Instruction.
Yeah, non-COVID impacted. And it was great. We had the opportunity to send a lot of our staff out of district, like we used to, for their own PD. And then we had a number of people stay in our buildings to do work on a variety of things, including reviewing data regarding the New York State assessments and looking at science. There was also a wellness component, which we felt was really important, that our staff take some time in our building. I have to give a shout out to our building principals and our department chairs as well, who really do a lot to help organize a day like that. So thank you. I agree with what Mr. Evans said, the hoedown at Sapphire was great. If you haven't been there before, you should get there. And one thing I really want to say is Burlington, well, it used to be known as Burlington Coat Factory, Burlington Store, Burlington Store just opened up, I believe in Harriman Commons on November 11th. One thing that they do is they work with a group called AdoptAClassroom.org. And when they come into a new town, they literally pick a school and they adopt, they try to adopt either a specific classroom or an entire school with a grant. And tonight, you saw under the donation, the donation pile, under the donations, under the business section, a donation for $5,000. Burlington Company chose Central Valley as the recipient for that. They were the closest in proximity. So they kind of like, oh, who's closest? And Central Valley Elementary was. And Dr. Alt and Mr. Brown are deciding how that money will be spent. There will be an event at the school where somebody from the company will come and have one of those big, huge, you know, checks. It will be, it will be great. And so we'll let you know. We have a lot to be thankful for, so, similar to what Dan said, happy Thanksgiving. Thanks.
Thank you. So is this what happens in curriculum? You talk a lot longer than you used to?
I got to tell you, I've been shackled for the last five and a half years, so I'm scared. No, it is.
My time.
It's great, it's going to be.
Much more exciting on the instructional side.
It's different, it's different. So I'll shorten it next.
No, no. Patrick?
Okay, so I'll keep it short. I'd just like to acknowledge and thank a couple of people who made a donation to the district, Melinda Godse for a $100 donation to the Inspire Success Alumni Scholarship Fund, and Kevin Trimble for another $100 donation to Inspire Success Alumni Scholarship Fund. Thank you for thinking of Monroe Woodbury. I'd like to just sort of thank the business office and thank our Director of Accounting, Tanya Mulrad, for all the work that went into the audit report and our annual audit. They do a great job. It's a team effort, and, you know, they're doing the lion's share of the heavy lifting when it's related to the audit and the audit report that you accepted tonight. And I hope everyone has a nice evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Taryn?
Congratulations to all the fire safety poster winners, and happy Thanksgiving.
If anybody is not going to be here on December 6th and they would like to get an absentee ballot application, please reach out to my office. I'd be more than happy to mail it out to you. Or if you're driving past, you can always pick one up right at the desk.
Great, thank you. Elsie?
Congratulations to all of our fire safety poster winners. It really was a highlight. To Carol Pelisi and Eric Lenza, I had the opportunity to work with both of them. I wish them a happy and healthy retirement. And lastly, I want to congratulate Abigail Connolly, a senior who's enrolled in science research course that is offered at our high school through U Albany. Today, she was awarded the Calm Seas Research Award, presented by the Calm Seas Behavioral Health Organization. In addition to $500 check to further her research, Abby was offered a position as Abby was offered a position as an interim with the organization following graduation to continue her research and work with the company to bring awareness to the struggles faced by veterans and members of the uniformed service each day. Abby has been researching how moral injury impacts psychogenic non-epileptic seizures. The acronym is PNES. She's a senior. In female US combat veterans between the ages of 18 and 40, she is looking for participants to help her complete the study, specifically female combat veterans between the ages of 18 and 40. If anyone is interested in participating in her research, please contact her mentor at the high school, Mrs. Papulu, or go to our website and look for communications and send your name. Congratulations to Abby, and I want to wish everyone a healthy and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. I want to thank Patrick and the entire team and committees and all those involved for that presentation tonight. A lot of work went in, and we saw it as it was growing and developing. The fire safety students was the highlight of the evening. Some of them were so excited, they ran up here. It was so great to see. I, I told Jamelle I missed that with my kids being that age. Almost Maine show was great. I'm going to put in a little plug that maybe some of this budget money could be used for some better audio visual in some of these shows, but that's a different conversation for another day. But really great time. They do a great job. The arts are really important in our district, and I really fully support them. And last but not least, I just want to wish everyone a very happy, healthy Thanksgiving with your friends and family. Next up, may I have a motion to adjourn the public portion of the meeting and convene into executive session for the purposes of discussing an employment agreement of a particular district employee?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.